Welcome to the Monday, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Grafton Planning Board.
October.
Uh, this is October twenty-third. What did I say?
November.
I've been fighting with, I've been fighting with another committee's agenda, which is confused about that. It thinks October falls in September on its agenda. Um, it's been, oh, God. Anyway. What do you say? Uh, let's see, we're doing this as a hybrid meeting. All the usual procedures are, uh, in place. Shall we do a check to see that everyone is, uh, available and can hear and we can hear?
Absolutely. Mr. Robbins?
Present.
I am present. Mr. Davidson?
Present.
Mr. Van Katramen?
Present.
And Mr. Hassenger?
I'm here.
Staff present, we have the town planner Fiona Coughlin?
Present.
And Natalia Howard.
Present.
Couldn't hear you, Natalia.
Present.
That's still not very loud, but. I don't know. Um, okay, uh, we're all here, we can hear each other. What do they do? They do raise hand if someone has comments when the time comes. First item, public input. This is where if anyone has something they want to talk to us about that's within our purview, uh, that's not on our agenda, um, this, this would be your time. Is there anybody? Anywhere for that? Apparently not. Action items. Uh, request for fee waiver on MSR, MRSP twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Splash PP.
Good evening, Norman Hill from Land Planning. So after dealing with you for forty eight, forty years, we made a mistake. We, um, got a call from Fiona about four weeks ago, said we forgot to notify the abuddies in Northbridge. As you know, this Farnesville project has a buddies in Grafton, has a buddies in Northbridge. We had submitted everything with just the Grafton list. It's totally our fault. I said Fiona, please don't make me do this. She said, Norman, I talked to the town council and he says the town's at risk. Can't have that. So I came over, I withdrew it, and then I brought over land planning checks to repay the filing fees of eleven seventy-five for the preliminary and two fifty for the special permit. My client's with me here tonight, um, Stephen David, and he paid those fees back in June, same fees, eleven seventy-five and two fifty. In fact, this process started about three years ago, where he paid thirty-two seventy-five in preliminary plan fees. So this is like the third time the fees been, been paid. I just throw myself at the mercy of the court and hope that you would let me have my checks back.
I don't know whether we should do this now, or I think we're doing hearing a little ways down. But I noticed a comment in the meeting material from someone who asked whether the meeting record contained a list of the people's addresses in Northborough. Like we do for the Grafton side. And as far as I know, that's not on our record at this point.
Couldn't quite hear what you said, Bob. I'm sorry. I'm losing my hearing. I'm getting kind of up there.
Say one. One of the filing, one of the things that gets filed is the list of a butter or, or the people who are supposed to receive a notice?
Yeah, and in June we only gave you the list for Grafton.
Right, because that's all they have.
Well, there are also abuddies within three hundred feet located in the town of Northbridge.
Right, but I would expect that had to come from the list for Northbridge, probably had to come from Northbridge.
Yeah, we did, we did get that, we did get that.
But the question was whether we got a copy of that list and if it's in the meeting materials.
It is, it is now. It wasn't in June, but it is now.
It's in there, sorry. Getting there, there it is.
At the very bottom.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, cause I, I didn't pick up on it, but I've been fighting my computer. Tooth and nail. Oh, well. Any comments, any discussion on this?
From my two cents would be that the filing fee was paid for the application that was withdrawn almost immediately. And such that the, uh, there was essentially no processing done on the application that I have no problem with waiving the fee this time around.
I'll say for, for my seat, you know, I have a few, you know, minor concerns. Number one is that the, for each filing, the staff has had to do, you know, a bunch of work, including the new filing, they've had to review the application, they still had to do, you know, all that, you know, work to review, prepare the memo that, you know, Miss Coughlin, you know, prepares. As well as, you know, my understanding is that there was a understanding that Northbridge had not been notified as of our last meeting that you did appear before us with, and the only mention for why we were continuing then was that you just needed to update the plans. And we still don't have any updated plans from, since that meeting. And, you know, we didn't mention to the, to the board then that you had a notification problem or that we might need to, you know, consider a fee waiver or anything like that then. So I have a little bit of a concern around, you know, that process.
Yes, well, I wanted to have the public hearing tonight and get all the comments from the board and the public, and I wanted to present the plans to you, which we really haven't done yet. And then have one revision go to Graves and back to you. So I'm, I'm going to be getting everything back to you in a week or so, and then submit it to Graves. And I have with me tonight a request for a continuance. Once, once we have the public hearing for, for a month's continuance, so we can, you know, get the plans, revise plans to everybody, and then get their review in time for the next time we meet. Now, the other thing, um, Fiona has prepared her review, the plans haven't changed, it's the same plans that we originally submitted. And I still have her letter, she won't have to do another review letter. You won't have to do another review letter, the review letter is already done.
I, yeah, I requested, because there was no changes from the previously withdrawn application, this one I've resubmitted a new exhibit into the, um, testimony for this new filing.
Yeah, so I don't see where you'd have a, uh, many more administrative fees or, or costs associated with this re-submission.
I've got a concern though, that we just turned down a fairly similar request from, what was he, a former selectman?
Yes.
For a, um, minor, minor change.
So we haven't changed the plans. I, I'm not going to yell at my wife because she didn't get the, the two lists in, but, uh, first mistake in forty years, I'd hope the board would, uh, let us get by this problem. I mean, when Fiona said the town was at risk, I immediately withdrew and resubmitted.
Yeah, I can only talk about thirty-three of the years. Well.
Hey, Bob, um, I, I'm in alignment with you. While in principle, I, I want to make sure that we, we are consistent. If we declined the similar request that had come in earlier, um, I, I struggle with how do we say no to one place and yes to another one?
Um, I don't know the circumstances with the other one. I, I, I thought I heard you say their plan changed. I, I don't know what the circumstances were with the other one. Certainly our circumstances must be somewhat different.
The, from my memory, and I could be, you know, misremembering, but someone can tell me if I'm wrong here, is that there was a administrative issue that could have been caught by town staff, but was not town staff's issue. That was, you know, in with the initial filing that they needed to refile with, with a correction.
Right, the survey.
Because there was an error that wasn't administrative on the applicant's part. That, you know, like I said, town staff could have caught, but that's not what they were, you know, primarily looking for. And similar in this case, you know, we're not looking for what Northbridge had in their abuddies list. That I, I see as two very similar situations because of just the nature of, you know, where the error fell and, you know, what went on from that.
If I recall from the last one, I, we did put it to a vote. I think it was pretty even down the middle. I would be willing to put this one to a vote, the same way that we did the last one, and see where each member falls.
Well, we will, um, once we, once discussion is complete. I remember that. I, I think the flaw on the other one, just mentioning was that they let, they were, they were creating a lot, I don't know, you know, two lots, and the sideline came in a little too soon, a little too far for the frontage requirement, and they had to refile with a.
So that's a change in plan. We haven't changed the plans.
Yeah, but I don't know that we have any rules and, and that's. This is the way you go down, down the slope. Um, well, someone want to make a motion one way or another.
Sure. I'll, I'll move that we do not approve the waiver request. Not the waiver request, the, the fee waiver request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins?
Nay. Nay.
I vote aye. Mr. Davidson?
Nay.
Mr. Van Katramen?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
Aye. Motion to not waive carries. Sorry. Okay. Moving on, bills.
We have a bill, I move that we pay it.
Second.
What was that bill for?
That bill was for, sorry, let me get, let me navigate.
The traffic report on Broad Meadow.
Correct. Yes.
Don't we get reimbursed for that?
Ye, um, Natalia? Natalia handles all things peer review financing.
Yes, we have peer review funds set aside for that. They submitted a check for that, so we pay it, but we get the funds originally with peer review fee.
Okay. You made a motion?
Dave made the motion, I seconded it.
Did somebody make a second?
I did.
Justin did.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Van Katramen?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, minutes of previous meetings.
Yes.
I move that the board approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth as drafted, with any corrections that might be noted during the discussion.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Van Katramen?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Staff report.
Okay, so.
You have lots of time.
Um, so, as everyone in the board knows, we just had town meeting, a successful town meeting. That involved a lot of prep and a lot of follow-up. So the main thing that I've been focusing on, to follow up from, from that is getting our district compliance application in for the MBT communities. So I updated the bylaw and I'm prepping the, the documents that we need to present to the town clerk. Natalia's working on our Form seven. Um, we've, Dave and I, as well as CMRPC, worked out any final tweaks, um, to the compliance model. Everything is basically ready to go, so, um, hopefully we'll be able to send that in by the end of the week. That's my goal. Um, so we can get it in early, get state feedback, and then go from there. Um, so the proper parties relating to each article have been notified, um, of the passing. We did get a couple of folks reach out and ask what was the status. The folks that run, uh, the town's GIS have been notified that the zoning map is going to change. However, we recommended waiting until obviously the AG approval before we take any serious next steps. We had our master plan workshop on the nineteenth at the high school. It was very successful. We had a ton of people come. Thank you to everybody for coming, uh, and providing your feedback. Next steps now will be taking that data and organizing it and using it to develop the actual chapters of the plan, which that will start, I believe, early December. Um, we have had a couple of folks reach out during the meeting, um, during the workshop, rather, to join the master plan working group. The call for volunteers is closed, so, um, I was curious as to the board's thoughts on accepting more folks, or, you know, we, I'm happy to talk about this with the master plan working group, if this is not a, um, appropriate time, but I do know we have some time to kill. You know, my opinion is that the, the, the group is large, um, with a lot of conflict, like a lot of schedules that we're having to work around. So it's always quorum issue in the back of my mind. Um, I don't want to deny anyone from the public the opportunity to join and be involved in the process, but I think that, you know, the meetings are open to the public, and I think that's the avenue we need to take until folks formally step down so that we can proper replace them with somebody who's willing and able to accept the role and understand the roles and responsibilities. Like if we, obviously, you know, it's a one month a meeting commitment. So that was, you know, something that we've been trying to figure out how to approach and would like some thoughts, recommendations from the board on how to proceed.
Oh, I guess I'll speak up first. I think, uh, at some point, once you get too many people in a, in a group trying to, you know, share ideas, share opinions and make decisions, it, it gets to be, you know, unproductive. And I think, you know, the, the nature that we have so many citizens willing to at least be, you know, participate in some way is, you know, a huge benefit. I, I'm happy for that. I think, you know, to the extent that we have the working group, the call for participation had been going on for a long time and it is officially over. My opinion is we stick with that. If someone steps down, we can certainly open it up to let someone else, you know, be, you know, officially in there. But beyond that, I would be, you know, I'd make the suggestion that the, you know, working group, of course, try to incorporate any public that wants to attend and, you know, provide feedback that way, rather than expand the group.
Yeah, when, when we created the working group, we didn't create it with a set number of members. We did put out the call for, and for volunteers, we got twenty-seven. And, uh, that, 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 they agree that call is not really open anymore. Uh, the meetings are open to the public. We meet once a month on Zoom, and, uh, we certainly wouldn't turn away anybody from participating and, uh, any member of the public can attend the meeting and, uh, we would allow them to speak, uh, even if they're not formally a member of the group. I likewise have a, have a potential issue with the size of the group and being able to maintain a quorum. It's, 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 it's early days in this, in this process as of yet, but that'd be, my recommendation would be that, uh, you know, make sure anybody who wants to participate can attend meetings and participate, even if they're not formally a member of the group. And I would, I would leave it at that for the moment. Flexible as far as, you know, as things proceed. If, if something different turns out to be better, we can adapt as need be.
What, what actual differences are there between someone who is officially a member and someone who just comes and participates? Are there votes? I, I, I caught the, the quorum, which is interesting. But are there, the only other thing I can think of really is votes, you know, and how much voting is there? Or is there going to be?
Right, the, at the moment, most of the votes are related to things such as approving meeting minutes, like your standard administrator. Right.
I think that's.
Right, but the working group is expected to help assist with facilitating events, advertising, going, you know, further than the average person who would be attending just to provide feedback. There's also, uh, you know, an expectation that the working group will be involved in providing comment on the drafts of the master plan, which the public is, you know, we encourage that as well, but it'll really be, um, will really be, um, relying on the master plan working group members to make sure that they're, um, all taking a close eye, taking a close look at that.
Do you have any input from our CMRPC folks on this question?
I, Sarah, the project manager reached out to me and asked what I, what I thought, and I said, I will ask the board. So, um, you know, I'm, I, my, my opinion is that, yes, you know, similar to what's been said this evening, because of the so, so many conflicting schedules and how many people are involved already, if somebody requests to step down, we can switch them out with somebody who's, who has agreed to, um, sign up. But until then, I think we, it might be better from a management perspective to just continue to invite them and.
It would seem to me that one thing that, um, people get is a recognition, their name is someplace on a list.
Right.
Which brought to mind, how about if we invent something called associate member? And people who want to help and, and be recognized can be brought in as associate members, and we can draw from associate members when a vacancy as a official member develops. What do you think, Dave?
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, by whatever name we choose to reference it, um, pretty much anybody who has contributed in a meaningful way ought to be recognized in the final report, whether as a formal member of the working group per se, call them associate members, call them contributors. I'd be, I'm, I'm kind of, my, my thoughts are kind of loose in exactly how we say that, but I think there's, it's a good principle to acknowledge the contributions of, of everybody who's participated one way or the other.
And the group was produced under our authority? Okay, I, I favor what I just said. Uh, that's, I like the idea of calling it something like associate.
There's no limit, is there a limitation? How many associate members? Cause there was three folks who approached a CMRPC staff person asking about.
Since we're making this up as we go along, and there, there are no rules about membership, we, we, CMRPC asked us to, to, to set this up, I suppose, and we, we did. Um, I, I say.
Yeah, no, I'd say no limit.
Yeah.
I have never heard of there being a limit myself, and it's not just.
Well, since we invented it, I don't, I, I can officially say there's no limit.
There, there are no rules or regulations around this, specifying the number of members. Really, the only regulation such as there is, is the requirement under the town charter that there be an odd number of members.
Yeah, not necessarily associates, however.
No, that doesn't, that, that would not count.
This is more or less the way CONCOM worked, works, worked. It had associate members, I think CONCOM, or is it, is it ZBA?
ZBA has, has well-defined associate members.
Yeah, but they, they, yeah.
CONCOM, I think, had, had at one point informally associate members.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, um, do we, if, if we want to do that, maybe we should vote on it, and I don't know whether we can vote on it now or whether we should put it on the agenda.
I would lean towards something on the agenda just for sake of.
So ordered.
Sake of transparency, but yeah, no issue.
And as I recall, the SLUCC board actually adopted a charge for the committee.
Right, right.
But it didn't necessarily say membership or any of that sort of thing.
Wasn't, I don't think it was that specific. It wasn't specific as to the number of members.
Cause the planning board is empowered, as I recall, in the charter to establish committees.
Yes.
Or subcommittees.
I, I like the idea of also establishing some level of commitment, so let's say a person's gone to, let's say, three uh, monthly meetings, so they've gone to a full quarter of meetings, that there is a pathway for them to get recognized the same way as, as a member. So if there is some, you know, maybe three months is not the right number, maybe it is, but if there is some sort of pathway for them to get recognized if they're committed to attending the meetings.
Right, and that's another, that's a good point, because there's, you know, typically at events like workshops, you know, people are obviously very excited, but then sometimes they learn about what the, what's required.
And that also prevents people from just all jumping in at the last meeting to try to.
Right, exactly.
Anyone didn't want to do that.
So the charge does specifically say not to exceed twenty-seven members?
Members.
Members.
Doesn't say anything about associate members.
Okay, I, I will work on that.
See, I remember the membership of the committee we had for the last master plan, which was my whole idea.
Yes, that was.
And, um, that was people who wanted to do it and showed up, and not too many people did. But, um, okay, why don't we have a, why don't we cobble up something for, to official, officialize it?
Okay.
At the, whatever, whatever, at the next meeting. Okay, uh, correspondence. I don't think there was anything correspondence, was there?
There is that memo.
Just the, the thing about individuals going to the chair, for one.
There's also the shared spaces memo.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, the one item of correspondence from the town administrator regarding, um, subdivision, that is something that looks to me like something that we should consider incorporating somehow in our subdivision rules and regs.
I would agree.
I think we have to figure out, I have more questions. I guess we can talk a bit about it. My, um, the town has policies about how it maintains its rights of way, both the paved part and the unpaved parts. And they have a set of policies, and they apply, whatever the town wants to apply. Want to make, I don't think that anything we do changes the town's obligation or commitment. You know, if we say, okay, you want to put that there, that's okay, you can put that there. But, uh, they have to look to the selectmen, to the administration about what they can expect for, uh, care. I, I can expect a brush cutter, once a year, to come down the road, uh, and cut brush, sort of. And that's about all I can expect, even though the water flows down on, on my property all the time off the road. Other people think they're entitled to more, but I think it's, I think it's the town's responsibility to have policy that applies to everyone. I don't see how something we do, he, he says he's already got a problem. I don't see how setting rules now that go into different things, that go into future decisions, help that situation. So anyway, I think there's a, a more of a conversation to have about that, figure out
Sure.
how the town policies, what they are and how they work, and I have a pretty good idea. I'm going to know what we're going to find out.
I'm, I'm thinking that there may be a place in the subdivision rules to refer to those town policies and say something about what, what, you know, what the, what should be approved. I'm not going to work on the details here, but I think there's a, there's a connection here between, you know, the town's policies and practices and, uh, something that we might possibly reflect in the subdivision rules to complement that.
I think that we want to start by having the conversation with the administration about the, the whole time, what applies to everybody, what the rules are, and then work from there.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can probably talk about this. Yeah, yeah, we can probably talk about this later, but the, the basic, the, you know, the premise is that anything that beyond. Basic maintenance is something that the town is struggling to stay on top of, but obviously we can continue to talk about.
The town's struggling to take, take, stay on top of a lot of things. Um, and it always does, I mean, that's, that's the business it's in.
Yeah, I suppose like any, if, you know, decorative fencing, um, landscaping requests that are beyond. Your basic requirements for maintenance, things of that nature.
A- anyway, I, I, I need that framework. Before we go further. Okay?
And we, and we do have some other things on our plate with respect to the subdivision rules, the MS four.
Yes, yeah.
Work, which we haven't, we, we've only briefly discussed.
Even the cell tower rules. If you've read this, um, all right, it's, um, seven thirty. What I'm gonna do is, uh, we have six hearings tonight, but three of them have requests for continuations. And I think the best thing to do is to do that and then we'll move on to the, what these folks are here for. First of all is, uh, fifty-eight Filet, Filet Street.
I'll move that the board grant the applicants the written request to continue this hearing to November thirteenth at seven thirty.
Second.
Moved in second is a discussion, hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Venkata Trauman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassinger.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, um. Seven, seven Main Street.
Move the board vote to grant the applicants written request to continue this hearing to November thirteenth at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion, hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Venkata Trauman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassinger.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to.
One twenty-four West Bar Road.
That brings us to item, uh, five A, which is.
We have one more continuance, Bob.
I thought I had all of them.
Next one's one twenty-four.
Didn't I just?
We just did seven main.
Uh, I, I'm. I do that one.
Move that the board grant the written request of the applicant at the one twenty-four West Bar Road Project to continue the hearing. To November thirteenth at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion, hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Venkata Trauman.
Aye.
And Mr. Ra, Mr. Hassinger.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. Now.
Now.
Um, item five A, uh, forty-three Estabrook. Request for special permit. For, um, an addition on a cell tower.
This is a new hearing, so pursuant to sections one dot five dot seven, one dot three dot three. And five dot eight of the town of Grafton zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Commencing at seven thirty PM in conference room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road. To consider the application for a special permit request to co-locate on an existing wireless communication tower. And install associated equipment on property located at forty-three Estabrook Avenue. Shown as Grafton accessories map forty-nine lot one A. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty zoning district. Dish Singular Wireless LLC, care of Crown Castle is the applicant. Knowton Farms Nominee Trust, Patricia K. Knowton trustee is the owner. Copies of the plan are available for public inspection at the planning department during normal business hours. Or on the town of Grafton website at WWW dot Grafton dash MA dot gov, on the planning department development products webpage.
Is there an applicant here? No one representing the applicant.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Um, as I understand it, they want to add.
Oh, I'm sorry, someone is raising their hand, one moment, Dominica.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you, yes, this is Dominica, um, I work for Crown Castle and, um, I also. I'm sorry?
Do you have video?
I'm joining as a.
Yep, just, I just promoted Dominica.
All right.
She should be able to share, uh.
Okay, uh, we'll see if you show up here. Go ahead.
There is, she's on mute right now, it looks like.
Uh, it looks like you might be on mute.
I'm sorry, board members, uh, my name is Dominica Tadashori, I'm the site acquisition specialist for Crown Castle. Um, I also have, um, this evening in attendance, my colleague Jeff Barbadora, who is, um. Also on the meeting and I don't know if he's also be able to be unmuted as well for participation purposes. Um, the application before you is. Sure, I'll stand by. Sure.
So I've just promoted Mr. Barbadora to a panelist, so he should be, um, able to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not getting videos, but, um, on this screen, but go ahead.
Okay, um, this application before you is on behalf of Dish Wireless. Crown Castle owns an existing ninety-one foot tall monopole telecommunications facility. At forty-three Estabrook, um, this, um, tower has been in continuous usage for, uh, over ten years. And now, uh, Dish Wireless would like to be, um, a carrier on the tower, uh, so it'd be a new co-location. Um, so with the existing tower being ninety-one feet tall, Dish is looking to co-locate at the fifty-nine foot level. And to, uh, proposal of three antennas and ancillary equipment, um, such as, you know, radios and mo- mounting hardware. Uh, Dish will also lease seventy square feet of ground space within the existing compound. And associate groundwork includes, but it's not limited to radio cabinets. There is absolutely no proposal to, um, either height increase in the tower. Or compound side, size expansion, so it's just a new carrier coming on and all within the existing leased compound.
Okay. Three antennas, one antenna array.
Yes.
Uh, that actually ends up making a difference the way, uh, I, I think, I think of each of the. Columns as an antenna, being a electrical engineer. And the array, uh, and, and we're adding one array. Um, often, uh, the arrays have had nine antennas on them. Um, technology's changing as we go on, okay, uh. What would you, would you like to tell us anything about this, uh, and have you looked over, um, the isotrop, um, report?
Uh, no, I have not seen any comments, um, come back, um, so I was, I'm not able to, um, I don't know what was said.
Okay. I just got to look through it recently and, uh.
Okay.
It, uh. Interesting report, somewhat different than the ones we usually have, cause it gets into this, how should this be permitted question? See, some comments on. The quality of the regular, the rules that we operate on.
So, so the board does have the, the pleasure of having Mr. Maxson, who produced the isotropy report in, in our attendance tonight.
Yes, he's, he, he's here, um, and I remember this tower quite well. I believe it was the first one we permitted under the bylaw that. I and our planner worked out in the early nineties. I think it was first considered in ninety-five. Um, so that, so it's been there a long time. Um, so now, what would you like to? Oh, one, one, one comment that's online that maybe, uh, we can just get out of the way. Um, there's a, a comment from, uh, uh, someone out there on the, on the internet. Um, concerned about the antenna being at a low, low level. And, um, I suppose it's basically health effects, that sort of thing. Um, and, uh, either I or David can explain about that, what we can do about that.
Uh, is that an invitation?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is David Maxson, M A X S O N, with isotrope, I S O T R O P E. I was hired by the board at the expense of the applicant to review the application and to assist the board. In, uh, hearing the application and, uh, crafting a decision, um. So I wrote a report, I apologize, it was, uh, pretty late, I submitted it on Friday. I hope the, it is in the hands of the applicant, uh, but I can summarize. And, uh, uh, one of the things the applicant noted in their application was that they felt that this application qualified. Under federal law as an eligible facilities request. And, uh, that gives it some special rights, I would like to remind everyone, I am not an attorney. Although tonight I'm playing one on TV, so what I'm giving you is a technical interpretation based on my experience with these matters. And, uh, anything that sounds like legal advice is not legal advice, it is a recommendation to check with your counsel. If you think you need legal advice. So, uh, with respect to the eligible facilities request, the concept is that if any existing permitted structure, like a cell tower. That already has wireless facilities on it and has been approved for that purpose. Uh, has additional facilities belonging to the same carriers or to a new carrier. Um, i- i- that do not exceed certain limitations. Um, in, in, in dimensions, in size. Uh, that those are eligible facilities requests and are entitled to, uh, expedited review and, uh, as the, the. The law says, uh, the board may not deny and shall approve that request. I've reviewed the technical, uh, attributes that the applicant has described and shown in their plans. And I think it is consistent, as they say, with an eligible facilities request. Now, what does that mean? Uh, that means that under the federal rule, uh, not only is there this may not deny and shall approve requirement. Um, but, uh, uh, also that the review must be faster. That you have six, thirty days to determine whether or not the application is complete, and I understand you're still within that thirty day window. So if there's anything that's missing in the application, there's time to ask for it. Uh, and the second is that including that first thirty days, there's a sixty day shot clock for making a final decision. Uh, now that's all on the federal side of things. On the town regulatory side of things, uh, it's my understanding, the federal law does not preempt your special permit process. That you are still entitled, if you feel this is a special permit kind of an application, to treat it as one. And, uh, again, advice of counsel is always helpful in these kinds of matters to make sure you're dotting every I and crossing every T. So, um, what I did is I went through the history of the, uh, permits. And the permit modifications for the facilities at that tower site. Um, and in that history, um, what we see is that. Each individual wireless carrier was granted a special permit to occupy the tower. The first wireless carrier built the tower, and so it had a special permit for the tower and to occupy. Uh, since then, that first wireless carrier sold the tower to a tower conglomerate, uh, Crown Castle. So now the tower is owned by an independent party and the special permits that were issued to AT&T, Verizon and T-Mobile. Uh, stand and have been standing for a long time, uh, and. Uh, eh, from time to time, these companies change their antennas, modify their antenna arrays. And when they do that, because of the way the, the permit is worded and the way the, the bylaw is worded. They come back and, uh, ask whether they need to get permission to make a change. And if the town determines that they do, uh, it's reviewed in a public hearing process as a minor modification to. Not only to the tower, but to the special permit. So, customarily, each carrier gets a special permit. Now, in reading your bylaw, that's not necessarily the way it's worded anymore. It doesn't specifically say a carrier needs a special permit, but that wireless facilities need special permits. So, you could look at this perhaps in two different ways, again, advice of counsel is recommended. And the, the, the first way is to treat Dish like the other three carriers. Say, okay, Dish, you have an application for a special permit. Let's use the special permit review process to review your application and determine whether or not to approve it. Uh, by the way, it's an eligible facilities request, so we might have to approve it. Um, that being said, there are conditions and requirements in special permit rules. And compliance requirements for continued operation that special permits convey onto a perma-tee. So you might, uh, just do that, with Dish being the fourth, uh, special permit on the tower. The other option is to simply say, well, we're done with this per carrier thing on a cell tower. Let's just modify the special permit for the cell tower, which is the first special permit that was issued. And already has one wireless carrier on it, modify that existing special permit. To include this, uh, new facility at fifty-nine feet above ground. Um, and, uh, that would be if the board was of the mind that. For future applications for this cell tower and for other cell towers. You wanted to perhaps streamline the process so that a, a new wireless company coming on to an existing cell tower would not have to necessarily. Get a special permit, but could simply, um, get a, a minor modification of an existing special permit. Uh, and that would also perhaps streamline things to be more, um, compatible with the eligible. Facilities request concept. Uh, one other aspect of an eligible facilities request, back on the federal side of things, is that. The, the, uh, finder of fact, you, the board, are not allowed, according to the federal rule. To ask the applicant for proof of need. So, interestingly, when a new cell tower is proposed, you're looking for proof of need because. You might deny the cell tower, and if you deny the cell tower, you might get sued for prohibition of, provision of personal wireless service. And you ask for proof of need in order to make a determination whether there's a significant gap and whether the federal law. Impresses some a- additional urgency on your decision on that brand new cell tower. Uh, in the case of this application, because it's an eligible facilities request, you've already permitted other wireless facilities there. Um, basically, the FCC says there's a presumption of need and you shall not review need. So all of the components in your bylaw regarding application submission materials. And regarding, um, proof of need that relates to that, uh, and regarding any decisions relating to proof of need. Uh, would be, uh, preempted by the fact that it's an eligible facilities request. Have I got you with me so far? So, um, uh, covering all that, the board might want to walk through this. And make a determination whether or not it agrees that it's an eligible facilities request. And then if so, decide how you wanna handle a special permit application. Is this a special permit application because it's a fourth wireless carrier? Or do you wanna modify an existing permit for the tower to add a new carrier to it? Um, and, uh, then from there to look at the criteria in the bylaw. For rendering a decision, and I tried to list them in my report. Uh, that might not be preempted by the FCC, that you still might want to make decisions on or render conditions about. Um, now, as for the fact that this is an antenna array being mounted about fifty-nine feet above ground. Um, I don't recall seeing any, uh, safety analysis of the installation. Which would be a reasonable thing to ask for, I expect that the results will. Prove that the facility will be compliant. All four carriers simultaneously, not just the one carrier that's being added, but all of them have to be evaluated simultaneously. Um, that the combination of all four carriers will still be compliant with federal law. Uh, under the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. Under the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, again, this is a legal thing that counsel can help you with, the Telecommunications Act says that you can't regulate the placement of these wireless facilities based on their emissions so long as they have been demonstrated to be compliant with the federal standards. So I think it would be helpful for the applicant to produce evidence of compliance, not just of their facility alone, but of their facility in combination with the three other facilities on the tower in order to complete the record. Any questions?
Well, exactly how we find our way through that maze to actual things we have to decide and vote on, I hope that Fiona and you can at least figure out what the questions are for us or sort through, maybe with the help of counsel if needed. I definitely don't know the answer on this one. On that last, though, I agree with you. I think basically what we've always said on the health effects was that the federal rules didn't allow us to take that into consideration, that the federal level figures out what's safe. And basically, you're saying they have to show that they satisfy those requirements that the feds make.
Yes, I think you've said it well. It's that it's up to the board to decide whether they have to show it, whether you want to have evidence confirming that it will be safe because that is your purview to confirm a facility will be safe. But the safety rules that apply are the federal, the FCC rules.
Well, okay, to that point, there's an online comment to our record from Twenty-One Adams Road. That person doesn't happen to be out there.
I believe they... No, they're not.
Okay. Well, I'll read it then. "As an owner of residential land at Abut forty-three Estabrook Avenue, and given the safety concerns about proximity to wireless communication towers, it is imperative to know the radius from the cell tower to our homes. The proposal is a significant increase in the use of the tower and therefore could affect the health and safety of many people living near it." That pretty much comes to the point you were making. You know, the determination we're talking about, given this input and so on, I suppose. Given the geography, I rather suspect that it will be not too difficult to evaluate that positively, but I think it should be done to complete our record.
Yes, I think, and to do it using generally accepted best practices, which is the method that applicants are using to evaluate the emissions of the facility. Now, in terms of the comment that you've received there, one of the aspects of it is distance from residences. And there is this, I'll call it a meme floating around, that there is some magical safe distance to be from a cell tower, which is totally naive because it has really nothing to do with the engineering of each individual application. Cell towers have a certain height. They have antennas that focus signals like the lens of a lighthouse. And you, distance is a very poor proxy for exposure. But ultimately, if you're two hundred feet away or three hundred feet away from a cell tower, or even less, if the analysis that the applicant presents, that our peer review confirms that the facility will be compliant with the federal safety standards, it doesn't matter whether you're two hundred feet away or two thousand feet away, you will be within the safety limits.
Yeah, that, I've always wondered about a part of that because it came up. If you're on level ground, I understand, you know, I understand what were patterns and all that. But if the elevations, the elevation of the abutter is considerably, is like, say, up at the level that the antenna is focused at, then, you know, I get comfortable less quickly. We had that up in the center of town. There's a couple hundred-foot hill right next to where someone wanted to put a tower. So they would have been shooting right into a neighborhood not too far away. We never, that actually got denied, but for other reasons. So anyway, maybe the analysis that you said, you mentioned, would be good to get.
Yes, I think a standard safety analysis, including all four carriers on the towers. And that is just one other thing about the commenter's comment, is that you already have four carriers on the tower who have multiple antennas on each of the three faces of their arrays. They are much busier wireless companies with many more customers than DISH is. DISH is putting up one antenna on each face. So it's less than a thirty percent increase in the total amount of signals that are coming from the base station. So I don't consider that to be a significant increase.
If I may, Mr. Maxson, just knowing that you're not a lawyer and the lawyer would be the better answer on this question, but given our timeline for determining that the application is complete, would that safety analysis you're describing be an item that we should have before we say the application is complete?
I think so. I would just want to verify one thing because I don't recall this. Is there a submittal requirement in the wireless special permit rules for demonstration of said compliance with the emissions limits?
I don't think so.
In the bylaw?
I don't know whether that existed in ninety-four when we wrote that. Maybe we should look at doing something about that.
Okay, it's helpful to point to something in the bylaw as support for the fact that the application is complete. But in this particular case, I think it is so common for land use boards to review compliance with the federal safety standards, that it's a reasonable thing to request and...
But I don't think it would disqualify the satisfaction of the filing requirements. We're supposed to decide by, within a couple of days, whether they've satisfied the thirty-day window.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes?
I just want to point out that actually the thirty-day has come and gone on October twentieth. This application was filed on September twenty.
That's incorrect.
That's, yeah, that's not correct.
That's the date of the letter, but the stamp indicating when it was received by the town is the twenty-seventh.
Yes, the application package was received and uploaded and officially accepted on September twenty-seventh.
And if you look at the application first page, you'll see the date stamp, when the town received it.
So were you still saying something?
So what I was saying was, yeah, thank you. So just that you might determine tonight that the application is incomplete and that this is the information you require to complete the application. That would pause the shot clock until that material is in. You would then want to check with counsel to make sure that you've made a reasonable interpretation of the rules regarding the shot clock.
Alternatively, we could just say, during the hearing, it turns out that we've, this question has arisen and we would really like, it would help, it would help us, help us make a decision if we could have the answer to this at our next meeting.
And that won't toll the shot clock.
Well, it won't toll, but would we be justified to say that a necessary condition hasn't been met?
Well, yeah, no matter what, I think it's a reasonable request. It's a reasonable request as this is something that boards review all the time in cell site hearings.
Before we say that the submission is complete?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think, go ahead.
You can either decide the submission is incomplete and say, "This piece of information needs to be submitted to complete the application," in which case you would ostensibly toll the shot clock until it's received. Or you could just simply say, "We'd like this information before the next hearing so we can review it" without worrying about the incompleteness aspect.
But the point is, are we justified in saying that that's a submission requirement, given what we have in our rules?
I'd have to go back, look more closely at the rules, or maybe something that indirectly refers to that. But so it's less a question of whether it's a submission requirement and more a question of whether you think it's, you know, a written submission requirement as opposed to something that is absent from the record that is necessary to complete the record.
So all I was going to add is I think, at the very least, I think the boards, and from my understanding of, we're the only two that I've talked, but from my understanding of what the board has said, you know, gone with, that we definitely want this analysis, you know, one way or the other. And I think that it probably does benefit, at least for my own opinion, to say that it's incomplete, but we'll still ask counsel on that point so that way there, if counsel says that it is, you know, complete, you know, from their understanding of, you know, our rules that we're just, you know, discussed, we can, you know, it doesn't affect the shot clock at that point. We can communicate it, you know, Steph can communicate it to Crown Castle that it isn't, but either way, we're still expecting the material, and it would only affect the shot clock at that point.
So can I just, this is new to me, so I just, we need to be really clear here. So the shot clock stops if we ask for this safety analysis because we are, let's hypothetically, the board, if they were to go in this direction, it is missing from the application, therefore rendered incomplete. Because if we were to continue, then we're running into an issue with the thirty days.
Sixty days.
Okay, but the application has to be deemed complete or incomplete within thirty days, right?
That's correct.
So if we continue to November thirteenth, that's a problem.
Yeah, but then if they appeal our decision that it's incomplete and they end up on the right side, where we've exceeded the total shot clock.
As I understand the rules, you can deem something, an application, to be incomplete even after the thirty days. It's just that you don't get to pause the shot clock. So all I'm suggesting is that you might decide that the application's incomplete because you would like this, our safety analysis, to be produced. You assume that that means the shot clock is told, you will check with counsel, and the applicant will do the same. And, you know, you could argue it out at the next meeting. But at least it potentially preserves your right to toll a shot clock.
That's what I was going with, and I think the, you know, even if the shot clock is paused, I want to be operating at the moment on the presumption that it's not, as far as our timeline, you know, planning goes. But I would like to still, you know, for me, I like to say that I don't believe the application is complete due to the missing of that, you know, analysis. But we'll verify with counsel and...
Well, we're going to have to take a vote tonight if we want to do this. We'll have to take a vote on that.
Yes.
Yes. I feel a reasonable justification for looking at this because of the input from the abutter. This is an actual abutter, although we're looking at forty-three and she's at twenty-one, but that's the way the land is out there.
For what it's worth, the abutter is about three thousand feet away from the tower.
It's not that much.
The abutter at Twenty-One Adams Road, the house on Twenty-One Adams Road is approximately six tenths of a mile, a little over three thousand feet from the tower at Forty-three Estabrook.
But the question was raised, and hopefully, it's not too hard for them, and maybe they'll tell us how hard it is, to give us this analysis.
Yeah, and for the sake of completeness, one might assume that this particular abutter's concern is not necessarily dissimilar from the concerns of other abutters who may be somewhat closer than six tenths of a mile from the tower. So I wouldn't hold the distance against the abutter here.
Does the applicant have any wisdom to provide us with on this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, per your regulations, there wasn't a requirement for this type of study. And, you know, as of this, just before this evening, I never received any comment letters either in order to prepare for, you know, this issue that came up just now. But we can, on our end, do a report within ten days of this. You know, this is something that we can order through our company, you know. But again, this is just like a co-location on an existing tower. These are pretty, you know, not very invasive applications. So I don't know if you would, your board would be amenable to conditional approval based on passing EME report or things of that nature. This is something we could easily produce for you.
Well, at this point, does the board want, I think we could, we would take a vote someplace like around now about whether we want to deem it as incomplete and look for the report. I don't think it's going to change what actually happens. Hopefully, you know, whether we request it or not, but, you know, doing everything we can and hopefully not really creating a big problem. Maybe we could take a vote like now.
I'll move that the board finds the application is incomplete for the reason of a miss, of no RF safety report, as Mr. Maxson has described. And pending receipt of said report, we would find the application complete.
Yeah, that report involves the aggregate.
All carriers, including the proposed carrier on the monopole.
Someone want to second that?
I'm sorry, I don't, that's for the purpose of discussion.
Go ahead, discussion.
And I seem to recall at some point during this conversation that, excuse me, that we would want to check with counsel to make sure to confirm that it is appropriate for us to deem it incomplete.
That's part of my motion.
Yeah, it's probably not going to change things too much because hopefully they will have submitted that element before the next meeting. So no matter what counsel says, we'll have the ground covered.
But it affects our shot clock.
So the idea is, and I think it's, that's pretty clear, the board, the board is interested in this particular report.
Yes.
And that being what, well, in the context of the motion in hand, that's just about that report. There will be questions about, you know, what else might we need after that?
Any more discussion?
Just another quick question, not to sidetrack, but DISH Networks, or maybe not DISH Wireless, but I think they're also going through an acquisition themselves. So I just wasn't sure if that would play into this. They're going through a merger with EcoStar right now, so I wasn't sure if that would play a factor into...
EcoStar isn't one of the occupants on the, no, I guess.
No.
Okay, so, okay, I don't know whether that's going to, I don't think we can know whether that would make any difference to this at this point.
Yeah, I think we deal with the application and the applicant has presented to us.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Hearing done.
Mr. Chair, so just right now, you know, the motion is outstanding, but... Mr. Chair, so just right now, you know, the motion is is outstanding, but there's something else to bear in mind is that. After this, Mr. Max, just to confirm that I'm not totally, um, missing this. We'll also need to determine if it's a, um, EFR, I believe is the abbreviation, AKA minor. Change versus a special permit process.
Yeah, I don't wanna equate minor change with eligible facilities request, minor change is your term.
Okay.
For modifying a special permit.
Okay.
Minor modification.
And we can address that later.
You can address that if you decide to modify an existing special permit rather than to issue a new one. But let's not equate minor modification with an eligible facilities request.
Okay, you and you.
Right.
And counsel are gonna help us with what we need to do about that. Any other discussion on the motion? We haven't taken a vote, have we?
No, we have not.
No, these things.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hasser.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Hopefully, that'll all sort out. Reasonably well, um, okay, now what more do we need in the hearing tonight?
Should we take action on any sort of determination by the board on eligible facilities requests tonight?
I have no idea whether I'm. I don't know, and I'm waiting, I think that that'll be. Isn't it, it, doesn't that end up being a part of how the decision is drafted? Uh, we don't necessarily have to decide that separately at this point, do we?
Uh, great question, I think, as a practical matter, it would be prudent at the end to have made a determination. Because it was an a- a- an assertion by the applicant. Um, but in terms of managing your time and your shot clock, if you at least treat it like an eligible facilities request. So that, um, you can decide later, I I imagine that would be okay. It might be something to ask counsel about to make sure that I'm.
Yeah, okay, the only way we can ask counsel about that is if we don't take some action tonight, so. Um, does anybody object to doing that?
No, I think it would be good to work, if I remember correctly, you know, you've indicated that if this is an eligible. Facilities request, we are somewhat constrained in our ability to basically deny.
Right.
So, if it's not an eligible facilities request, we have a little bit more discretion in our ultimate decision. But that that influences the form of our final decision, potentially.
An eligible facilities. Um, request. Means we have to approve it, but it doesn't say, does it? That we can't put some of the conditions that special permits can place.
Right, that's my understanding.
And so, that's the direct, you know, that's makes sense, I don't think we, um. I don't, I don't think making a decision about the eligible.
Yep, and the.
We don't need to do that tonight.
And the other differentiating factor as well as the call it out is eligible facilities request deals with what is placed on the monopole, not. The associated equipment that gets placed on the ground, right?
Actually, it's more complicated than that.
Okay.
It, uh, and you may have seen in the letter describing the eligible facilities request and in staff's report. That there are a list of criteria.
Yeah.
The FCC starts out with, uh, saying that if it's a substantial modification, it needs to go through a regular permit process. If it's not a substantial modification, it doesn't say minor modification, if it's not a substantial modification. It's an eligible facility that they may request to have.
But. Does being an eligible facilities request preclude requiring a special permit? We just can't say no in the special permit.
Well, that's that, and that's why I said at the outset, is that if you if you read the 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 way it's written, it's, you may not deny and shall approve. What does that imply? That you have a process for reviewing it? How else are you going to not deny and approve it? So, that's where I suggested, and I've seen this in other other communities, that, and counsel can review this, that. You have the authority. Uh, to review it as a special permit application if you feel that that's where it fits into your, uh, your rubric.
And as long as we don't say they can't do it, in other words, approve putting up the facility. Seems to me that we can, where special permits are involved, have some conditions, there was, actually, I think there was a waiver. In the originals one, because I think we had paved access road, and this was across farmland. So, we got convinced to let, to waive that requirement, uh, but there are requirements like that. Um, which. I think it's simpler than we're making it, and I think we just move on with whatever else we need to cover tonight.
Is there anything else on this application that we need to cover tonight?
I guess not.
For the, for the most part, it is pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Um, you know, you know, no, 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 no changes in the footprint, no changes in the tower height, simply. Adding one antenna array below the three existing arrays, that's sort of.
Right, and.
That doesn't, that that doesn't seem like a major, major issue.
And and back to Mr. Wood's question, which I was forgetting to answer, which is, is in those criteria that also has to do with no excavation within. Thirty feet of the compound, they're putting more equipment in the compound, of course, uh, but that does not exceed the threshold. For a substantial modification.
Yeah, okay, so I think, and you could just see, it strikes me that, you know, you know, pending, pending further, you know. Review of all the materials submitted, really, the only thing that we're missing is that, you know, analysis. Of of the emissions of, the combined emissions of the four carriers.
Right.
Yeah.
And I really have, I had, you know, I don't have any other issues with this, really.
And and at that point, once that's received, then the determination, just so I'm getting the order of operations correct, is the. The determination if it's a, um, EFR or a regular special permit process, which historically in Grafton's, my understanding. And Natalia can tell me if I'm not getting this right, but co-locations have always been treated as special permits.
A minor.
In our definition of the term, adding a new carrier to an existing permitted tower. Uh, is treated as a special permit, if you want to continue to do that, uh, I don't see any reason.
Actually, uh, yeah, yeah, we might have done that, I'm I'm thinking of, they come in and they wanna put up new antennas in place of the old ones.
Right, those are, yeah.
Those are modifications.
Yeah.
But we can, we can, once we get advice from counsel, then we can, we can decide, okay, so just wanted to make sure I got it straight.
And.
And look, if 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 we're not tolling the shot clock, um, we need to. Uh, let's see, one, two, our next meeting is the thirteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And if we're, if we're not tolling, we need to have a decision to make, to vote on that date.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if we're, if if we're likely to approve the special permit, it almost doesn't matter whether it's an eligible facilities request.
Yeah, I guess that's my, that my confusion is they've submitted an application for a special permit already, and they have all of the materials, and if. The Grafton historically treats it this way, and it seems like that is legally okay, I guess it doesn't.
Yeah, I want to be careful, we're not equating an eligible facilities request as an alternative to a special permit. The eligible facilities request is a federal, uh, framework. That modifies your review process. So if you determine that your review process should be a special permit, you do that, you just take out of the special permit process. All of the things that are preempted by the, uh, FCC ruling.
And as a matter of fact, since this has been submitted as a special permit request, hypothetically. If it didn't really need to be submitted as a special permit, but nevertheless it was, we process it as a special permit and we're done with it.
Right.
Yeah, I guess the decision can say, when you get to a criteria. That it does, that this one doesn't apply because it's an EFR.
Okay, indicate.
I was, I was gonna say, basically, that I think we just have a decision ready for our, you know, next meeting, you know, that. This is being brought up on one way or the other, just to, you know, if, that way that we have a draft decision. I do think we should make a finding that we, you know, determined it's an eligible facilities request or not in the decision, one way or the other. I think it's useful to be in the decision.
I don't see that, there's no requirement anywhere for us to find that it's an EFR.
Well, let's see what counsel.
A yes, well, yeah, uh, unless counsel says otherwise, but we've never done that before, we've just been presented with. Um, here's this thing and the rules say, here's this change and the rules say it's okay, that you have to let them do it. You know, ten feet or whatever, add on.
Not, not for extensive discussion right now, but, you know, there have been some, some hints here that maybe we, uh. You know, it it would be in our interest sometime in the not-too-distant future to review.
Yeah. Let's, 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 let's take that up, um, when it's time is is.
Now is not the time.
Now, now is, I wanna go home tonight, I don't know about you two.
Other than to put on our list of things to do in the future.
Okay.
Natalia has her hand up.
Yes, Natalia.
I was just going to, um, say that historically what was being done in the past was any co-location. Not to, you know, at whatever location it is, would go for a special permit. Then, once, uh, they have that, if they had a a modification that would require a change in space, et cetera, then it would be a. Modification, application with a public hearing. If the change were minor and there was no changes to space, et cetera. Then they would go for the minor modification, which did not require a hearing, that's what was historically done, that's just an explanation.
I don't think we have, I don't remember another case of adding another array at a lower position. There might have been one, but I don't think so, and I don't know whether it was before or after EFR. Um, I think we're spinning our wheels.
Yeah.
Um, if the applicant wants to, um. You know, we probably should do, I was thinking, ge- given the timeline, I don't, I don't know whether they even need to.
Yeah, I I I, not sure if we should be, I don't think that they should continue, because we're, right, we're stall, we're, shot clock has stopped now.
It's a hearing, we're in a hearing.
Okay.
The applicant has, uh, thank you, by the way, um, offered to produce.
Right.
Uh, an RS.
Okay.
Report in ten days.
My, my point is that somehow, the hearing has to get continued.
Right.
Ordinarily, we ask an applicant, a special permit applicant to, uh, make the request for it. Because that gets around any question, uh, about timelines and whatnot, um. In this case, we have the, the federal law setting a, now setting a a short, a a shorter window. Than the special permit window usually has, so having that request isn't mandatory, but if. They'd like to keep it simple and be done with us tonight, they might ask, yeah, do a con, uh, a. Request to continue the hearing.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, ask, so can we continue the hearing to November thirteen?
That would be what I was, uh, looking, tha- that's the next meeting. Yeah, that would be what I would like to see, and, uh, usually, uh, you can work with Fiona on. We have to, you know, you have to submit a a request as a form and whatnot.
In writing or?
I think, I think I just heard a verbal request to continue the hearings to November thirteenth.
Yep, so I, I'll move that we grant the applicant's forthcoming written request and just verbal request to. November thirteenth to continue the hearing, and our board typically does that at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hasser.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, now we're moving on to. Is there anybody here for one eighty-eight Providence Road?
Yes, he's right in the audience.
Oh, okay, well, I guess we should do this in, in just in the agenda order then, we'll, we'll go to, um. Farnum, yeah, uh, sixty-one Maple Street, Farnumsville Acres.
Good evening, Norman Hill from Land Planning.
Mr. Hill.
With me tonight is Steven.
I just got the public notice to read for this one, I'm sorry.
It's a new hearing.
It's officially a new hearing, so I need to read the notice. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, commencing at seven thirty PM to consider the application for a major residential. Special permit and preliminary plan approval for a nine-lock residential flexible development on property located at sixty-one Maple Avenue. As shown on Grafton Assessors Map one twenty-nine, Lot seventeen. Said property is located in a medium-density residential R twenty and industrial I zoning district. The applicant is Stephen David sixty-one Maple Street Trust and the owner is Chung Hee Chung Pak To Young, I probably get that worse every time. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours. Or on the town of Grafton website at www dot Grafton dash MA dot gov, on the Planning Department Development Products webpage.
Good evening, Norman Hill from Land Planning, with me tonight is Stephen David, our, our client. He has applied for for two, there are two applications, one for preliminary subdivision, a nine-lock preliminary subdivision plan. And the other is for a special permit for flexible development, and what I'm showing you here now is the flexible development, this is what my client would like to build. That road is five hundred feet long, it's just a single road, goes downhill at at a constant slope of three percent. Or any serious cuts or fills, there are three lots to the right, three lots to the left, and three lots past. Total of nine lots. Uh, we've received from Graves their review letter, we're in the process of making all those revisions, we've received. A letter from your staff, and we're in the process of making those changes to those comments. Um, so I believe, we'll see what's said tonight, we'll hear what's said tonight, and then we'll ask for a continuance for a month. Because I think I can get all these revisions to Graves and to your staff in about a week's time, but let's see what's said tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does your submission include both a conventional and a, uh?
Yes.
So what you're looking at there is what the conventional project would look like, you could see it, it it involves a lot more, um. Development of the site, everything in green is a wetland, the property lines are all in red, driveways are all in gray. So, you can see that the the driveways pretty much cover all the site and and they intertwine with all of the wetlands downhill. We'd rather go with the, uh, the flexible, less road, less impact on the resource areas, the wetland areas.
The lot count is the same in both plants, correct?
Yes, nine lots in both, yeah, both fully compliant with your regulations, we did ask for. We did ask for one waiver on the tree location, we provided the right number of trees. But you have a specific distance between trees, and we're varying the distance a little bit to accommodate the driveways.
If they're in the right of way, read the town administrator's memo.
Yeah.
Um, becau- although, that's something we do require.
Yeah.
Within the right of way, in the tree.
Yeah, as as far as the spacing to common driveways, I think that's okay by me, just to say it out loud.
Um, okay, so Fiona, did you have some, well, do you have something, do you have more you wanna say before?
No, I just was gonna open it up to the board, to the public, see what people have to say.
Yeah, Fiona, you had some thoughts?
Sure, so, um, most. Sure, so most of my, my thoughts are, at, were added to the record, as Norman mentioned, he's, he's going to address those by the next meeting. I guess, I just wanted to know if there was any, um, clarification about the parcel in Northbridge, this little slice down here. Um, I know that there was discussion about that last time before we could.
Yeah, we don't wanna subdivide any land in Northbridge, because that would require us to go to the Northbridge Planning Board, so this just works with the land in Grafton, but there is a parcel leftover, there's two parcels left over, one is the twenty acres out back. That's just a leftover parcel, the other leftover parcel is about a quarter acre of Northbridge property that will be dealt, probably be sold to one of the homeowners who buy one of those three lots on the right-hand side of the project.
I mean, most of my, I don't wanna take up too much time with my concerns, because I already listened out to the record, but I guess if there was, um, you know, if we can make a point to talk to the common land and the plans there next time, um, that'd be great. And the wetland, potential wetland crossings and what that might entail of using that for common land.
Yeah, there are no wetland crossings on this flexible development. We, we avoid any wetland crossings, we don't get within twenty-five feet of the wetlands, the wetlands stay totally protected with this flexible development.
If you go to the standard project, the actual, there would be one, there would be one brook crossing, located, located.
That's right there.
Yeah.
Right there. So we can avoid that if we go to the flex.
I don't know if we want to do this at this stage of the game or a little bit later, but uh, one of the requirements is that the planning board has to express the board's preferences to the choice between flex and conventional plan.
Yeah, at the time you voted, at the time you vote on this, we would like that decision to be made, because then we know which, which project to design.
Yeah, well, we, we, we tell you what plan, plan we would prefer, but the ultimate choice is up to you.
Okay.
It's curious about the way that works here in Grafton, it's not the same as it works in other, some other, in, 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 at least one other town that I know of, the board tells you which plan to wo- work with. Here, we tell you which plan we like better, but you get to choose, so if, if we were to tell you we like the conventional plan, you can still choose the flex plan.
Okay.
Although, if I had to express my preference, it would be for the flex plan.
Yeah, well, um, I think we're free to do that at any point in the process.
That's my recollection.
Um, do the, I wonder if the board members feel ready to, to do that.
My only question which Fiona might know, or even Mr. Hill may know, is if this, you know, first off, is this going to the Conservation Commission in, in its current state between having both the flex and the conventional?
No, no, we'll only submit to them the final drawings, tha- that might be three or four months from now.
Yep, that's, that's fine, and I, typically, the Conservation Commission's practices, if you can avoid wetlands, avoid wetlands.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm prepared to.
Doesn't it?
Yeah.
I'm prepared to make a opinion on which of the two current versions of the plan I, I preference.
I think you already said you're prepared. And, uh,
Let me put that in the form of a motion.
Well, well, uh, Prebu, are you ready to, uh, for us to do this?
I am, I, I had a question on the, the access to the twenty-acre lot that is going to left, be left behind. I re- would we be discussing that, because I cannot see what was, what is being presented there, I'm assuming what's on page one is the flex plan.
Well, my, my client, my client currently owns it all, but.
Yeah, I thought that Lot Nine was gonna include the, uh, back.
Could you get closer to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Is this, I thought on the flexible residential that the back parcel was gonna be part of Lot Nine.
So Lot Nine is the last lot down, the bottom of the hill on the left side?
I remember seeing the plan.
I, I've advised him that's the last lot he should sell, and he should sell the twenty acres with it.
Well, I haven't made that decision, so I wanna be truthful with the board.
Is, is that gonna make it tricky to sell? Um, because now you have twenty-one acres or whatever for the tax people.
Yeah.
I, I was, I'm, I might end up moving there and, you know, doing something.
But you won't have access.
I'm really, I, I, I honestly.
Oh, in the house, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, the thinking on that is in its infancy, but it'll, it'll ma- mature as we go along.
But I think we can help ma- maybe reduce a little bit of cost if we, um, make this decision now and you can.
That'd be very helpful.
Uh, so any, uh, Prebu, are you okay?
Yep, I'm good, thanks, Bob.
Um, now, do we have a motion then on the board's preference?
I think I, I'll move that the board state that the board prefers the flexible development plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing done.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Vecchitraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassinger.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, now we can focus on pub- the, uh,
The flex.
Public comment, is there anyone on, on, online for public comment?
There is nobody with their hands raised, I do have a comment that I, we, uh, uh, that was added to the exhibits, I think that gentleman is actually here this evening, um, one second. There it is. This is actually a north, a Northbridge resident, um.
Is that the one I mentioned?
I believe it is.
Asking for the, um, the, um.
I think the, most of this was addressed by staff in-house today, but there is, you know, something flagged, the abutters in Northbridge shown on the posted planner incorrect. Have all the abutters in Northbridge been correctly identified and notified? I mean, we have the abutters list uploaded, so I'm assuming, yes, I, I'm not sure if this person is in a butter and is bringing that up, because.
Sounds like they got notice.
Whether or not they're in a butter, they're br- raising the question.
Mm-hmm.
Now.
And I.
And I have.
Maybe that'll help them decide whether they're in a butter.
I have Mr. Mon on, and I'm just gonna allow him to speak.
Just before he speaks for one second, one question I'm seeing just on the application package I just noticed now is the very bottom of the Northbridge abutters list, it's one page on our, on our materials, but it does say page one of two on the printout from Northbridge. I, I just wanted to understand if there is a second page, or if there was just like a footer from Northbridge, and somehow got missed from our packet, or, and to also know, did everyone on the list, if there is a second page, get the notice rather than just the first page?
Right, Natalia? She's got her hand up.
So, the second page, those were the two pages that the Northbridge, um, assessors provided, and then there was another page that was the exact duplicate of that listing.
Okay.
So that's why I didn't repeat it, because it was exactly the same.
Makes perfect sense, just wanted to verify when I saw that, thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr., Mr. Mon has his hand up.
Yes.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for answering that question, um, I did miss that, um, the Northbridge abutters, I guess, were captured on the first page of the, um, of the application. What caught my attention is on the plans, um, specifically, the, uh, the plans that were uploaded. The abutters, uh, shown on the plan were incorrect, and that's, that's sort of what drew my attention to it. But I, but I do have another question for, um, Mr. Hill, I guess, on the plans that are uploaded, I don't see a Lot Nine listed anywhere. And I, I think during the peer review, somebody from Graves had called that out, that there was some numbering wrong on the plans. And, and the flex plan, which, which I assume is the plan shown on the first page, is Lot Nine the one furthest, i- if you came straight down the road and all the way to the right?
No, Lot Nine is here, Lot Three is the one that abuts the twenty acres, but Lot Nine is here.
So, I know you can't see that on the screen, Mr. Mon, he's pointing to the very first house down the, down the path on the right, on the Northbridge side is Lot Nine, Lot Three is the one at the far back next to the twenty acres.
So, gotcha, so Lot, Lot Three then would be the one furthest back towards the existing barn, way in the back?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Mr. Mon, before you go, if you can just please state your name and address for the record verbally, so that we have it on for our file?
Yeah, absolutely, Sean, first name, last name is Mon, and I'm one-two-three Sprague Street in Northbridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Yeah, note, um, note that sometime fairly recently, like today, uh, there's a comment from, uh, Captain Colleen from the Fire Department, um, and he, he has, um, they've been doing this now, a fairly long list of things that we need to be sure you're doing.
Could you forward that to me tomorrow, Fiona, and we'll take care of that as well, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I don't know that there's anything in there that, I couldn't get it before the meeting, because it wouldn't open, it's been, um, and Natalia has fixed it since I noticed it just before coming down here, working minute by minute around here now.
So I have a, uh.
It used to be that everything had to be ready by Friday.
If there are no other comments for the public hearing, I have a request for a continuance for, for a month, because if we submit everything into next week, Graves is gonna need a couple of weeks to check everything, and your staff will need it.
So is that till?
Let's see.
Which date is that for, just to be clear?
Ask for one month.
Well.
Okay.
Um, that.
November twenty-seventh.
Thank you. November twenty-seventh, then?
Sure.
Sure, okay.
One, two, three, four. That's five weeks, but.
That's fine.
Because we have a three-week, we have a three-week window coming.
Either three weeks or five weeks, and I, I gather five weeks would be more comfortable for you.
Yes, yes.
I think three weeks is gonna be another.
That would be tight, yeah.
Will, will look like another busy meeting like tonight did.
Yeah.
Uh, by the time we get there. Okay, um, so that's a request.
I move that we grant the applicant's written request to continue until November twenty-seventh at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Vecchitraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassinger.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Okay, um.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think that brings us to, uh, one eighty-eight Providence Road.
Do we wanna finish, Norman? Did you wanna finish signing?
Oh, sure.
I fill in most of it, but just sign. Thanks so much.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have to read it in?
I see, I see what's happening, okay, um.
Do you have to read it in, or?
No.
I think we're already open, we've been open for a while.
Okay, all right, again, Norman Hill from Land Planning, with me tonight is Jay McGill for McGill and Associates. This is the property at one eighty-eight Providence Road, we have had a public hearing on this already, um, and since then, we've received your staff comments and Graves Engineering comments. We've revised the plans to address all of those, but we didn't get them revised until like last week. And rather than just submit them to Graves last week, I thought we'd meet here again tonight to see if anyone else had any last-minute comments that I should make changes to, and then we'll submit everything to Graves next, you know, by the end of this week, probably. So I, I have no new presentation, other than it's the five buildings, twenty-four units each, and I think twenty-five percent of these will be affordable.
Twenty-five?
I.
But they're rental?
Rentals, yes.
All rental?
All rentals, yep.
And how many units total?
Five times twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
Hundred and twenty. Quarter of those would be thirty, thirty affordable apartments.
Well, that's, that's good from the, um, safe harbor point of view. We're getting a lot of developments now that are twenty percent, so they don't, they don't make that, given the wisdom from Boston and all the rules. Okay, well, Fiona, did you have anything?
Um, nothing significantly different than my comments from before. Um, as Norman said, he's gonna work on, work on those, as well as get a response. Graves, I think we do have a, um, Kevin on the line, he might still be. Um, Kevin Dandray from, um, T E C, who wanted to explain some of his comments regarding the traffic peer review, so I did wanna give him an opportunity to, to join us, and I appreciate, Kevin, you coming on, I know that you weren't feeling well today, so. Wanna try.
No, thank you for, um, your understanding, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, can hear you.
Excellent, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name's Kevin Dandray, I'm a principal of T E C Incorporated, our closest office address is at three-eleven Main Street in Worcester, uh, and I also spend time at two-eighty-two Merrimack Street in Lawrence. Um, I had authored a letter dated October twelfth, um, I would imagine that's in the hands of the applicant at this point. And what I'd like to do is just give a quick summary of, uh, the two different segments of the letter. Uh, one is related to the traffic study, and the other piece is related to, um, some site plan-related comments. Uh, overall, the traffic study was, uh, professionally prepared, um, it looked at a number of different intersections, as you can see there on the screen at the bottom, um, intersections to the north at Milbury Street, and into the south at Cross and at Main. Uh, the entire, uh, study area, including the site access point, is on state highway, uh, so it's owned and controlled by Mass D O T. Uh, you'll, you would see, um, uh, within our letter that most of the comments in that first section are confirmatory in nature, uh, more or less to let me know that we did review a number of different aspects, but because they don't require response, we noted such at the end of each comment. Uh, but we felt that not only the study area, but the way the traffic volumes were adjusted, forecasted, um, we're all reasonably prepared. Uh, there are a couple of things that I would like for responses, and I think they would be prudent for the applicant's traffic engineer to respond to. Uh, one was related to the crash data, uh, there was a, a higher crash in incidents up at Milbury Street and one twenty-two. Um, that would have some extra traffic that would come through related to this development, particularly for access to the north towards, you know, north side of town, or the Pike, or particularly for drop-off and pickup activities at the high school or other schools. So, um, the, we're okay with the methodology for how they compiled the information, but there wasn't that follow-up discussion about the things that they felt might be causations for, uh, the trends that we see and/or an opportunity where they may be able to participate in mitigating. Ultimately, because this project requires a state highway access permit, uh, any work within state highway, including the access point, falls under Mass D O T's exclusive jurisdiction. Um, but, uh, at the town's request, um, I did provide a copy of the letter to uh, the permitting office at Mastot's District Three office, so at least they're aware of the comments that we have on behalf of the town. Uh, when we look at other elements related to safety or, um, the in- new intersection of the driveway itself, just for the applicant to confirm with a series of analyses for a left turn and a right turn lane warrant analyses, that would be helpful, that's identified under item ten. Uh, and also under item eleven, and this relates to one of the site plan comments, is, uh, we, we agree with the way they assess the sightlines. Um, right now, there's a lot of brush that's at that, you know, uh, gravel-type cut in the, um, in the roadway that goes down to the lower portion of Lot. Uh, what would be helpful is that if they could confirm those sightlines and then put them on the site plan, and then there's some other notes that we would recommend that are typical, like we've done, you know, for the Pleasant Street project, for the Z B A and others, that, uh, can help buttress the future aspects uh, of site maintenance, et cetera, so that, uh, it de- uh, it details where those sight lines are, those sight line triangles, and then keeping low vegetation, et cetera, in that area. Under item twelve, we have suggested, um, some elements that they could or should consider. Uh, these may come from the state as well. Or different elements that may help to reduce certain single occupancy vehicle trips uh, or provide other, um, multimodal, uh, features. So, things like bike racks. Uh, look at hybrid vehicle charging stations and this may benefit the applicant too. Uh, we see them on most projects now for marketability reasons and not just the environmental friendly nature of it. Um, so a few considerations there. Uh, as we look towards the next couple pages, the last couple pages of the letter, it focuses more on the site plan itself and item thirteen, um, and, and maybe I understand the applicant's engineer may have been working on some updated plans to respond to Graves Engineering's comments, but, um, uh, comment number thirteen and I don't know if, uh, Natalia, if you can bring up the, um, or Fiona could bring up the, um, the actual site plan right near the entrance?
There you go.
I'm gonna see if I can get it, yeah. Sorry. Let me pull it up in Adobe. It'll be better. One moment.
Yeah, and I believe on the layout, yeah, there you go. So if you can zoom in there near the clubhouse. That, um, there is a sidewalk that's provided down the main site driveway from one twenty two down into the buildings. There's good connectivity between buildings with sidewalks. Uh, but one thing that we found was missing was the sidewalk or crosswalk connection from that sidewalk over to the mailroom and that, that central building. You know, so if somebody wanted to leave their apartment to, you know, walk up the driveway and then cross over to get their mail, um, we thought it would be a practical consideration to have a short stretch of sidewalk to try to get that connectivity on site. So with the related crosswalks, you know, pedestrian warning signs on the site driveway, you know, given that it is fairly steep going down into the site, um, just to see that on the next iteration of the plan. Uh, comment fourteen is a general comment related to ADA and A A B, um, accessibility needs. Um, and just to confirm whether or not, and understand that there is existing topography that they're trying to deal with, um, just to make sure that they get a, uh, assessment from the inspectional, inspectional services department or building department about the, the compliance, whoever the local ADA compliance officer is. Um, anything over five percent grades along the driveway, um, you know, should have some sort of waiver from Mass A A B. Certain things, stop signs, stop lines noted on the site plan, um, just routine things and even within the, um, the details too, just noting that they should be a minimum of seven feet to the bottom, especially if they're near the sidewalks, just so that nobody hits their head. The sight line triangles, we already talked about that. There are certain elements of the safety features along one twenty two with the existing guard rail. And as they get into the process of reviewing the site access point with D O T, just to look at the guard rail treatments, um, some of those features are older. And just to make sure that there are proper attenuators in place, um, and that's related to comment number seventeen. Uh, this is an area that's, that does not currently have sidewalks, but understanding that, at least in most towns, and we do a lot of peer reviews and, uh, recently came up in Oxford, you know, where the bus service for the school department would typically pick up at the edge of the main road. Um, here on state highway on one twenty two. And if you have a number of children that are waiting at the top of the site driveway at the edge of state highway where there's higher speeds, I would recommend having a more formal place for the, the students to wait, preferably weather protected within some sort of a bus shelter. Uh, because the more convenient we make it, safer we make it for that use, it might result in fewer single occupancy vehicles near all the Grafton schools, which I'm sure everybody's interested in. Along the same lines with sidewalks, number nineteen, D O T will ultimately decide what happens along the edge of one twenty two, but knowing that there are no sidewalks today and even if the state does not require them to build sidewalks, I would recommend that the board considers a permanent easement along the frontage for Providence Road so that it makes it easier to facilitate future sidewalk construction, even if it is for the state to go do. Um, just as a proactive measure for trying to get the right things in place to, to make it easier to do a future state or federally funded project. Truck turning analyses for the fire department, maybe those have already been done. And, and not just for the fire apparatus, but in number twenty one, looking at the deliveries to the mailroom. You know, the driveway that goes around the back of that small building is pretty tight. Um, so just make sure that they have a plan for how they're gonna turn, you know, whether it's a FedEx truck, a Amazon truck, um, which are relatively small box trucks. Um, I can't imagine it's gonna be something larger, but something that the applicant can confirm. We already talked about some of these other items. I think one item with, um, and if the fire departments are to review this, um, then they may not have anything to do to coordinate, but in item number twenty three, uh, just to make sure that, you know, given that this is kind of a dead end section of apartments, you know, with, um, high density residential, if there's any need for even a, um, you know, alternative unpaved emergency access route in addition to the main driveway. If they've already opined and said that, um, that main driveway satisfies their needs, then there's no need to explore more for T E C's benefit. Uh, the parking, um, it's well parked, you know, there's a pl- a plenty of supply of parking. Um, and in our work with the Z B A, um, for some of the forty B projects, um, there are, they, I would fully expect that they would have a surplus of parking at two point two five stalls per unit. So with that, you know, whether or not the applicant wants to consider identifying some visitor stalls near each entrance, um, just for the convenience for those that visit, you know, whether it's family or friends, et cetera. That, that's not a requirement by any means, but just something to consider. But overall, and I think it's a good layout of the site. I think they have plenty of parking. And ultimately, um, with their process ahead with Mass D O T, that'll frame out with more specificity what their entrance to one twenty two looks like. So that, that's a summary of our comments. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, and then we're also available to review any responses that the applicant may provide. Thank you.
Alright.
So-
Questions?
Yeah, the, I'm quite happy with Mr. Dandray's, you know, explanation and that, apologies if I pronounce your name wrong, but the thing I just wanted to make sure is thought about and I'm, as both John and Normie both know, you know, our ladder one for the town. It has a weird, you know, relatively weird profile as far as where the wheels sit, so the K value when you're entering an area, it can, we had an issue getting into the fire department itself when it was first built because of the difference in heights of the pavement.
There's a big tail.
Yeah.
You know, it sticks out way beyond the rear wheels and, uh, it couldn't come down the little, little slope at the fire station onto the road.
Oh dear, the new fire station, oh dear.
So-
They had to, I think they changed the, they had to change the driveway.
Wow.
I think they had to shim the road as well.
Yep, I think so, yeah.
The highway.
Yeah.
Okay, I know that they had to fix it.
I remember them doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's just something that I wanna, you know, see if we can make sure we model that, uh, you know, not only it has the, you know, width and turning radius in, you know, in the development that, you know, given that it's on a hill, that it can get in and out without having an issue.
That's an excellent comment.
Okay. I, I had a couple of thoughts. Um, I noticed in our record, there's a copy of it correspondence, uh, at, uh, D O T about, uh, not having received a permit application. Um, how does that, or does that in any way interact with what we're doing?
That's it. Uh, another good question, Mr. Chair. I think with, um, understanding that there are two separate processes, um, I would advise that the planning board condition your approval on, um, the issuance of a state highway access permit from Mass D O T, uh, which they have to do anyway, but better to have belt and suspenders. Um, but ultimately, if there are any substantive changes that come out of that process, they should revisit the board, you know, with, you know, the attributes that are on the parcel that this board is reviewing. If those changes are within state highway, that again is up to Mastot's purview. So I would suggest that the condition could be something similar to, um, you know, if there are noticeable or substantial changes that occur within the private parcel uh, that the board had reviewed, that, you know, they come back to present those changes to the board. Otherwise, uh, I can't imagine there's gonna be a material change that they would see from that process.
Yeah. Um, I'm just wondering whether it, the shortest path to the end is if they continue what we're doing until they find out what D O T wants. So they don't have to come back and change what we approve later on. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure that needs an answer, although.
D O T publishes a standard radiuses and width and we, we've designed it per their standards.
Okay.
Do they, is there any concern about the actual location of the drive entrance from, you know, with-
It's already permitted, isn't it?
It's already what?
Permitted from eons ago.
I don't know. When you did the shopping center, did you get a permit for that curb cut?
I believe so. I mean, we made-
That was what, it was gonna be a shopping center, right?
Yeah.
I remember signing those plans at the beginning of a town meeting.
In ninety-three, right?
Never got built.
No.
But, uh, one thing, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda interested in, in the charging stations. Cause that's really a growing thing.
The new, the new energy codes state a certain percentage of all parking squads in these new multifamily residences need to be E V charging stations.
Brand new regulation.
And, and you'll be sub-
January first of this year.
Eh, so you're subject to that. Do you know what the number is?
About twenty percent, I believe.
Okay. My-
But there, but there's a, there's a different definition of a charging station. I mean, it can be as little as a, uh, forty amp, you know, is it slow charging overnight or is it high speed charging? You know, we're trying to stay away from the high speed charging because I think that'll invite non-residents to come in to try to plug their cars in.
Yeah. Wha- what I was thinking about was-
Slow overnight charging if we're gonna be providing.
Yeah. Uh, I, I was thinking of maybe it's good to, even if you don't, uh, there are two or three things about these. Even if you don't put in more stations or higher power now, it might, uh, behoove the, behoove the whole project to put in what you need like conduits and whatnot. So that, um, it would be as easy as possible to run. Uh, sooner or later, um, high speed charging is gonna be all, you know, what people want.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, uh, add something to the conversation, the, um, uh, with the new, um, energy code, um, it's something that some of the architects we work with have presented to us very recently, like last week or the week before, for a couple of our development projects that we're working on. And, um, it can be scalable so that you can put in a certain number minimum, you know, that you'd want for the, each building, say, and then have it be E V ready, like you said, with other conduits. So it doesn't all have to go in now, but it needs to be capable of handling up to that twenty percent. So, um, I, I think there's an opportunity to consider it, or a requirement to consider it in some respects too with the code. Uh, but some of those things should really be shown on the plan for the expectations for how many would actually be placed out there. And although the conduit system doesn't have to be designed on a site plan at this point, just to understand that it would be scalable for that future need.
Yeah. Cause the way we're going, you know, we're, we're gonna be banning gasoline pretty soon. But the, the other thing is something I haven't seen being mentioned in any regulations yet, but I have seen it discussed in various places. Um, that is the design of the charging stations that people find it difficult. The, the spaces are too small and they're, uh, not protected from the weather. Um, and there, there are people out there now asking that the charging stations really need to have some sort of shelter over them because you have to work around the car and so on. And also, that there isn't enough width. Um, you get into trouble with, the car has to be backed in to get to the thing, uh, uh, get to the wire and so on. Just sensitivity to the, the, sort of those forthcoming requirements, um, would be, would be really good if you, if you can, I think. Looking down, I'm an electrical engineer, you know, I think a lot of electricity, although I think we'll all be using hydrogen, uh, or, or what's the latest, um, a- ammonia, I think, uh, is the latest, uh, fuel. Yep, I read about it, it must be. Okay, okay. I mean, I, some, someone just said, um, the other fuels are, are, are gone. It's gonna be air, um-
I, I'd rather not get into showing on the site plan, just as a condition, say twenty percent, you know, for the code or whatever.
Yeah, okay. Well, thinking, forward thinking, I think would be beneficial in, in the long run to, um,
Seem like one of those conduits for this point to that point for future ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one other thought, Mr. Chair, is that, um, the layout of the sidewalks is obviously critical when you consider E V charging stations so that the cables aren't crossing the sidewalks or not impeding the accessibility considerations. So, I just, uh, encourage the applicant and the engineer to take a close look at those sidewalk widths to make sure that, you know, whatever they might need for charging units or bollards, et cetera, that it wouldn't be something that would compromise that walkability around the buildings or to get up, you know, say towards one twenty two or the mailroom, so.
Okay.
Might, might, or just make a look.
Against is, uh, National Grid won't even take a serious look at this until it's approved. Every part of National Grid's application says accompanied by approved plan. So we're not gonna get anything from National Grid until we have an approved.
On, on, on what aspect of it?
Underground utilities, you know, the, uh, where the conduits will be, you know, he's talking about bollards and, you know, we need to get a plan from National Grid. And as far as I can tell, their application says must be accompanied by approved plan. So we haven't really gotten too-
I don't understand that, but.
We downloaded their application and it says accompanied by approved plan pretty much all over it.
I can see them wanting how they're gonna get their electricity into the buildings being their concern, but I don't see conduits that you put in to go to wherever on the site would, from the buildings, from the power sources would fit in, but I don't know, I'm just-
So I'll know. Don't know either.
Um, in any case, I, I think it's a good time to be looking forward as much as we can. I think we'll be happy, happier down the road. You know, I think they'll also make a better, better project, that is, there're gonna be a lot of people interested in, in those features. So, anybody else with anything at this point?
Nothing more at this point from me.
Are all the public comment letters up on the portal?
Yep, everything's up there. Um, comments from staff. I did have a question, um, at the last meeting. I did have a question, um, at the last meeting, I was listening to the last recording before this, just pre, preparing, um, confirmation that changes requested from the water department were addressed, that was something.
Yeah, we have, we have addressed those, you'll see those soon.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, if you could just send me something that, you know, shows that that's.
Shows in the revised plan, so.
Great, okay.
And then, just to say it, I, you know, everything our peer review for the traffic suggested, that's having responses, I think would be, you know, wonderful to have, and, you know, I would like to still hear that, and I wanted to say, 'cause sometimes what our, you know, people say that is good to do, you know, if we don't say that we want it, it doesn't change anything. So, just wanted to call that out.
Okay.
All right, so I have a letter requesting a one month continuance.
It's either three weeks or five.
Five. I'm high, I'm not stressed right now.
And don't go too.
Or seven, or nine.
I'll fill in the rest.
Five should be funny.
Sign and put the reason on, and I'll fill in.
All right, so I move that the board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing until November twenty-seventh at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion, hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner.
Aye, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, I have.
Stay well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, boy.
Reports from Planning Board representatives on town committees and C M R P C. Anything?
Nothing beyond what we did at town meeting.
I was gonna say, I just, I thought, um, town meeting went really well, you know, I thought there was, uh.
It was a miracle.
Yeah. So, I, uh, you know, Dave, I think handled the questions pretty well as well, so thanks for that.
It just startled me, we had, I guess, the right mix there, or, or they were all so startled that they had working clickers, that, that they didn't, you know, that, that, that's my view, it's sort of like an extended town council. You, you know, you, you know those hundred faces, they come every time, they know how it works, and, and they have a, you know, a good cross-section of the town. It's when, you know, it, it, the dynamics change when, you know, a bunch of people show up just for, for something, and they're not, they don't really know how the whole thing works. Well, is there anything else that may lawfully come before us? If not.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving in second, and that's non-debate.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Hassner.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.